Call to order, the Town of Air Select Board meeting Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom in Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 978-772-8220. Note that there is a new Zoom number, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. All right, we can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we reviewed the agenda.
I have no changes.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, just for the record, and you have, when we get to it, you have the updated for the poll petition map. The one that was in the packet was not the correct one. You have a hard copy of the correct one, and then when we get to the hearing, we'll have it on the screen.
Very good.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any announcements?
Winner parking. Trying to get that out.
We actually do have two announcements. Yes.
Apologize for technical difficulties.
I didn't attempt the shared screen.
We have announcements?
Yes, there were two. One was, we may have a slide for the parking, and then for the upcoming holiday stuff.
Okay. We'll stand by. We'll get up to speed on all these fancy new electronics. It's exciting. There's a learning curve.
So, Mr. Chair, this is, if you want to do the holiday one first?
Sure. Okay, so the Town of Air has some holiday events. Saturday, December 7th, 2024, at 4:45 PM, we'll have the Downtown Holiday Stroll Tree Lighting with Santa and Mrs. Claus, and the Shobwa Valley Concert Band at Town Hall. Sunday, December 15th, 2024, at 2 PM, will be the Tuba Concert at Town Hall. And Sunday, December 22nd, at 1 PM, we'll have the Santa Parade from Peroni Park to Air Shirley Regional High School, and have a meet and greet with Santa after the parade. Very exciting. Good time of year. Okay? And we have a winter parking ban will be in effect from November 15th through April 15th, so in effect currently. The parking ban prohibits parking any motor vehicles on any street or sidewalk in the Town of Air between the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. The winter parking ban also prohibits parking any motor vehicle on any street or sidewalk in the Town of Air during the snowstorm. The purpose of this ban is to assist the Town's Public Works Department with snowplowing and snow and ice removal operations. If your motor vehicle is parked on the street or sidewalk between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM, it will be ticketed and may be towed. If your motor vehicle is parked on the street or sidewalk during the snowstorm, it will be ticketed and will be towed if it is snowplowing.
Just to clarify, should anyone be parking on the sidewalk? I don't think I ever noticed how it was worded. I'm like, why is somebody parking on the sidewalk? So, okay.
You shouldn't be doing it, and even more shouldn't be doing it this time of year. Okay, any more announcements? Very good. Public input?
Pauline.
Yes, Pauline?
It took me a while to figure out how to get in, but in prior Zoom meetings, all, what do we call us out here, Zoomites, are automatically muted. I noticed when I logged on, I wasn't muted, so I muted myself, but I wanted you all to know, maybe that's something, I think Mr. Goodwin is his name, should probably consider making sure everybody is automatically muted, because that's how it has always been with the new phone number.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Pauline.
Welcome.
Okay, any other? Okay. We'll move on to the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Town of Air, Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will be conducting an in-person and remote participation public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 6:00 PM regarding a petition by National Grid in Verizon, New England, to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixture along and across the following public way. Plan number 31025471, Third Street, National Grid, to install one JO pole on Third Street, beginning at a point approximately 160 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of the Third Street and East Street. National Grid proposes to install a new 35/3 pole 1-1 in order to extend power to new houses, 35 and 37 Third Street, in Air Mass.
Any?
Anyone from National Grid? No one here from National Grid? Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so you have in your packet the information and the request for the location of the poll petition. I know that it went through the interdepartmental review of all town departments, of which there were not any issues. Generally, there is somebody from National Grid usually to, you know, speak to the petition. I don't see them on Zoom or in the audience, but from the town, from all departments, and I know the DPW Director and the Police Chief are here, there were no, there were no issues with the request.
Okay. Seeing that there's no issues.
Pretty standard request. I mean, it's pretty annual. We got to move a pole. So, I have no issues with it.
Is any questions?
Like anybody else's either, so. So, if there's no objection, I will make a motion that the poll petition from National Grid in Verizon, New England, regarding Third Street, Plan Number 31025471, be approved as requested.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I make a motion to close that public hearing.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Town of Air, Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will be conducting an in-person and remote public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 6:03 PM at the Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432, regarding an application for the new, for a new general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, on-premise restaurant, all alcohol beverages license from Ravioli Theater LLC, doing business as Ravioli Theory, for premises located at 25 Main Street, Air Mass, 01432. For Zoom call-in information, please contact ATM@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100.
Okay, let's see, our applicants are here on Zoom. You have the floor, but you are muted.
Hey, thanks for having us on. This is Matt Lucas, myself and Terrell Wilson, my business partner, we're the co-owners of the Ravioli Theory. I'm very excited to move into the new space and open a new cocktail bar in town.
So, could you just explain maybe a little bit about what the restaurant is going to be?
Yeah, for sure.
So, overall, the same floor plan, same footprint as Bar 25, who was here prior. We will be a full-service cocktail bar and full-service restaurant specializing in kind of a connection of global cuisines. For the Ravioli Theory, we like to say, think beyond the pasta, so a lot of what we're going to be doing is kind of the typical bar snacks and bar food that you know, while putting kind of a global spin on it and introducing new cultures and new flavors to things you love, like per se, like a chicken and waffle plate, or kind of infuse new flavors into something like that. So, you know, classic favorites that people know, that bring a kind of a new twist on. Then I'll be opening around the same amount of hours as Bar 25, so that kind of Wednesday through Saturday, and we'd like to introduce a brunch as well on Sundays, but really open just for dinner service and brunch service on Sundays.
Okay. Any questions?
How many will this seat?
We haven't gotten a certificate of occupancy yet. I believe Bar 25 had 40 seats, so we're still sticking to that floor plan.
Okay.
But we haven't gotten our certificate of occupancy.
Okay, all right. I doubt it would change that drastically, so.
And Mr. Chair and members of the board, also, this went through the interdepartmental review of all town departments, both for the alcohol license and the common vic. There were no issues from any of the departments, and the town did send out, at the expense of the applicant, notifications to all of the butters about the hearing tonight, so everything is in order from our end.
Chief Johnston?
Yeah, I can just have a follow-up to that. And I know our fire prevention bureau has been working with the Ravioli Theory to get the hood system completed in the back, so I would be okay with the approval tonight, just pending the permitting installation and testing of the Type 1 system, which we've received some permitting today, so as long as we can have it pending all that, which would go through our office, would be okay with getting that done. And I know that we've gotten one permit so far today, we're just waiting for other things, but if you want okay, just pending the Type 1 hood system, that would be okay with us.
Type 1 hood system?
Yeah, it's for their kitchen operations, and I think they'll agree, I mean, it's just been a slower process than I think. I know the fire prevention has been working for you, and of course, we're going to work with them to get it done in a timely manner, but I think we need to make sure that gets done before, you know, they open up and stuff, so that's the only thing I would request.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions on that? I know you've been going back and forth with the lieutenant, so.
Everything just waiting for it to get submitted, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that the alcohol, yeah, that the all alcohol beverages license for the Ravioli Theory LLC, 25 Main Street, and application for the common vic to, license. Never have gotten that right.
That's a terrible word.
Pending the hood one, what was it?
You have Type 1 hoods from the permitting, installation, and testing.
Yes, that.
Okay, I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, congratulations and welcome.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, yeah, Pauline.
I'm so sorry, you just approved it, so nothing I say to change that, but what happened to the license issue to Bar 25? Usually they're sold to the new owners, but that was not the situation here?
Would you like me to speak on that?
Uh huh.
As far as we know, that one has been returned or absolved according to the Town Manager's Office.
Yes.
It's been given up.
So, Mr. Town Manager, can you confirm that at some point in the future maybe?
Yes, the Assistant Town Manager isn't here this evening, but I will confirm that with her and advise back.
So, it might be available to someone else to purchase, or to, I shouldn't say purchase, but apply to.
Let me, yeah, let me verify, Pauline, thank you.
Thank you very much.
There was nothing in the packet?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the Ravioli Theory.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So, what's going on?
All right, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please do again.
Really good at this. Town of Air, Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board, FY25 Tax Classification Hearing. The Air Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, at 6:05 PM, both in-person, Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air Mass, and via remote participation for the Town's FY2025 Tax Classification. At the public hearing, the Air Board of Assessors shall provide all information and data relevant to making a decision on allocating the tax burden, including the fiscal effect on the available alternatives. For call-in information prior to the hearing, please contact ATM@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100.
Okay, April?
Hello.
Hello.
Do you want to put that over here?
Yeah, floor is yours.
So, we have completed our valuations. I apologize, my voice sounds worse than I feel. Just getting over something. We completed valuations for fiscal 2025 for the assessments for the year, and now, working with the budget for fiscal 25, we are looking at the classification for what is going to be split to commercial and residential. So, basically, the purpose of the hearing is to adopt the residential factor, and the Select Board is the voting entity on that, and it's to determine, again, the percentage that commercial, industrial, and personal property will pay versus residential property. So, for those in the audience that aren't aware, some of the terms that we use, new growth additions to the tax levy base from new construction and property improvements, allowing the levy to be increased to cover additional services resulting from new construction, the tax levy being the dollar amount that needs to be raised through real and personal property taxes each year. The tax levy is the largest revenue source for mass communities, funding their annual town budget. The levy limit ceiling being the maximum dollar amount a town can raise in the fiscal year, which becomes the prior year's levy, plus prop two and a half new, prop two and a half increase, then new growth for the year, as well as any debt exclusions. Excess levy capacity is then the difference between the levy and the levy limit. Debt exclusions are voted at town meetings, temporary increase to the levy to pay for any capital projects. CIP is the notation for the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And again, the minimum residential factor is what we are voting for the residential So, my role in this is more advisory than anything else. We set the valuations of the property for the purpose of equitable taxation based on fair market value of the properties. We use calendar sales for 2023 for our fiscal 25 valuations. For some of the multifamilies, commercial industrial 2022 sales were also used. Review was in accordance with all guidelines established by Mass DOR, and we were certified by Division of Local Services in October. We do not, the assessors and my department does not set the tax rate. It's determined based on the amount of money voted to be spent at the annual town meeting, and then the split of the tax burden at this classification hearing. So, you know, the residents play as much a factor in this, this process. The assessment is only one step of the process, and then the full property, sorry, the full levy divided by the full property assessments is where we come down to what the rates should So, some of the things that need to be voted on tonight, one would be an open space discount. Open space per the state of Massachusetts is land classified in an open or natural condition contributes significantly to the benefit enjoyment of the public. It is not chapter land property. It cannot be, have a conservation restriction, and it cannot be used for income. If there is any open space in town, the Select Board may vote up to a 25% discount on that open space of any property, which reduces that property's share of the levy. As far as I'm aware, there's only a handful of communities in Mass that have open space. Air does not, so we don't typically vote this in. Next would be a residential exemption. The residential exemption is applied to a residential property, which is the principal residence, the primary home of a taxpayer. It is, the exemption is subtracted from part of those eligible parcels and shifted to others. The exclusions on this would be, excuse me, would be accessory land, seasonal homes, or non-owner occupied residential. The Select Board may adopt a discount of up to 35% on these homes. This becomes a complication, because it becomes a shift inside a shift, where you're already moving to commercial industrial. It then puts a heavier burden on the residents that you just took some of the burden off of, and we're not a heavy seasonal community, where a lot of this would apply to homes in The small commercial exemption is designed to provide tax relief for small businesses. Their tax burden that gets shifted to bigger commercial industrial properties in their classes. To be eligible, they must be included on lists provided annually to the assessors by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development, so we get a small handful list of communities, businesses that would qualify for this. They must have a valuation of less than $1 million, and an average annual employment of 10 or fewer people. In this case, the Select Board may adopt an exemption of up to 10% of the value of the eligible parcels. So, while there may be a small relief for some small businesses, there are a lot more cons to this exemption, being that the commercial industrial are already taking a bigger hit from the residential classes. It does not provide broad-based tax advantage to commercial industrial properties. The other properties, again, similar to the residential, the commercial industrial businesses that don't qualify, they take on more of that, and the bigger discouraging point to this is that the benefit may be realized more by the property owner than the small business owner. So, the small business owners are typically the ones leasing the properties, a bunch of small properties, in one big business. That business takes advantage of that discount, but doesn't always necessarily pass it on to their tenants. Adoption of the small commercial exemption also does, could lead to a hit in the overlay due to more commercial industrial abatement applications and complaints. Right now, the current makeup of commercial, industrial, and personal property versus the residential is a 71% to 29% split. Pretty, pretty similar to the last few years, it looks like. It dropped for a few years, and now it's staying pretty level at 2971. So, on fiscal 25, this is now our current information as to residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property valuations. Total valuations for the town is at 1,009,12691,436. That is an increase of 10.4% over last year, at the 1,732,419,951. Sorry, I'm kind of a little off here. Again, 70, roughly 71% and 29% for the residential versus commercial. Property types, the average single family went up from 485,123 to 516,481, a 6.5% increase. The median commercial industrial went up about 13.6% from 342,565 to 39250. Commercial and industrial have seen some big growth in the last few years, and so they are now taking, it seems residential took a few years of a good big, you know, big jumps. Now they're kind of leveling out at about 8%, and commercial industrial is taking some big jumps from 13 to 20%. So, that's where the valuations stand as of right now.
Quick question. So, as far as the property values going up, this would also be during the pandemic, when people were willing to pay 30, 40, 50,000 over the asking price to get the house that they want. So, you're looking at the price it sold at?
We're looking at the prices that property sold for, right? Because unfortunately, I mean, if you felt it was worth 100,000 more than what that was listed for, you felt it was worth getting that house. We have to go by what you paid for it, so.
But what about houses that haven't sold for a few years? How does their valuation go up?
They go up by an average percentage. So, if we find that all classes of residential went up by 8%, then every home that didn't sell goes up by 8%.
Okay.
So, we're, we're taking and increasing everybody. So, if, you know, ranches went by 10, and Colonials went by 12, and then this, we take an average of all the sales, and that percentage goes to everybody else in town.
Okay. Thank you.
So, for the levy limit, basically, to come up with the maximum levy that we can raise for the year, we take the 24 levy limit, we increase the 2.5%, and then this is the new growth that was calculated from new personal property accounts, new construction, new businesses, additions, things like that, the debt exclusions that may have been voted, and so the fiscal 25 maximum levy is 34,57810. The actual tax levy that needs to be raised for the year for funding is 30,297,897, which then leaves an excess levy capacity of 4,272,913. The increase in the levy from 24 to 25 is 1,722,678, at a 6% increase.
Just a minute. Pauline, do you have a question?
I do, just based on the prior discussion about market value. I don't ever remember our property taxes being based on market value, but assessed value. And Janice, I apologize if I misunderstood your question, but if I heard you correctly, your question had to do with, well, what about the people who bought houses for 100, 150,000 more than people were selling them for? Taxes are based on assessed value, not market value, so while I understand everything else about this meeting, and the tax assessment, and the rates, and the needs, and the limits, that particular comment just bothers me a little bit, because I don't want anyone to think that your property taxes are based on the market value of your house. Please clarify?
Well, your assessment, your assessment is based on fair market value, so the taxes are calculated based on your assessment, which is your fair share. Your assessment is based on your fair market value. So, if you paid 600,000 for a house, we're assessing as close to 600,000 as possible. If that house sold for 500, we have to get the assessment as close to 500,000 as possible. So, your tax calculation is based on your assessment. Your assessment is based on fair market value, which is what you purchased for.
Not to argue, but that's an entirely different explanation. Not to argue, but that's an entirely different explanation than I've ever heard in the 30 years I've worked here. Thank you.
Okay.
Further clarify because now I'm confused. If I look at Zillow, my property is listed at like $650,000. There is no way on God's green earth that my house is worth 650,000.
They give an estimated range. They give an estimated range. And Zillow uses calculations based on real estate stuff that we don't have.
Right, but if I call my mortgage company, they're going to be like, oh, that's great, you know, so we're going to give you this great rate and everything like that. So I guess what we're trying to say is the system's a little mucked up and how can we fix it?
Well, we do, we do mass appraisal. So I'm using what the actual sales are to do in a market analysis of what the actual sales are taking place. And I am taking that average percentage to everybody in town. So I'm not just coming up with random numbers of, you know, your house, you know, Zillow says is 650, so I'm going to say it should be 700 or I'm going to say it should be 600. I'm taking what the sales were and I'm viewing what actually took place and taking those percentages to everybody in town. So everybody's going up by a little bit based on what it looks like they could sell their house for based on what the market is doing. So I'm not just, I'm not doing a full appraisal. I'm not going in every house. We're keeping house details as accurate as we can. But we're looking at, you know, all ranches are going for an average of, you know, a 10% increase to what their assessments were. Everybody's assessments are going up by that 10% increase at that point. So this is just a quick overview of the last few years of the actual levy that needs to be raised, again, this year being the 30 million and up 6% from last year. And so this would be if the town had a single tax rate. So if the town were similar to the town of Shirley next door and we had a single tax rate in town, the tax levy divided by the full valuation times 1,000 would give you your rate per 1,000. Based on last year's levy and assessments to this year's levy and assessments, the rate did go down about 4% from 1650 to 1584 if we were a single-rate community. And again, just some historical to show what was voted on last year. So 1650 would have been the single tax rate. What was voted was a shift factor of 1.66 with a residential factor of .7427, which left the residential class taking on 53% of the levy load at a rate of 12.25 per 1,000. Commercial industrial took on about 47% with a rate of 27.38 per 1,000. So this is a representation of what could be done with the tax rates for this fiscal year based on our levy, based on the assessments, different factors that could be voted on. Again, this is up to the board. I'm making a recommendation at 1.59. While it looks like the residents are keeping a little more of their burden this year, it still keeps a fairly similar burden of 5347 on the shift of the levy. I'm doing this because, I'm suggesting this because the average bill increase is similar on both sides for residential and commercial. Commercial and industrial property did take a big hit in assessments this year, being as they were selling anywhere from 20 to 80% more than their assessed values. A lot of the sales that took place over the last few years have seen some big commercial and industrial growth. So in order to minimize the impact on some of the bigger businesses and kind of keep the small businesses in a similar increase to the residential rather than taking on a big burden, I tried to keep things a little more level. So the shift factor is a little bit lower, a little bit more kept on the residents. But I think it is a better balance to keep everybody in a good spot. Average residential bill increase on, again, the $516,000 house is about $234 a year. Average increase on the median commercial industrial of 389 is about 425 per year. If you have any questions on different ways or if you wanted to, you know, give me input on anything that you were thinking in this, but this is just where I felt it was a better balance to what was done last year versus what's done this year and what the assessments So the next slide is just the tax rate history, just showing, again, as assessments go up, tax rates come down a little. Obviously, we still have the levy that has to be hit, so taxes still increase a little bit to meet that levy. But this is historically what the tax rate has done and what my suggestion would do to the tax rate for fiscal '25.
So we lowered the tax rate, but unfortunately, everybody sold their houses and businesses at a really nice profit and the rest of us are sitting here going, what happened?
And unfortunately, when you're on the other end seeing some of the houses and saying, how did they get that assessment or how did they get that sales value? There's no way I can get the assessment to that sales value. It is, it's a very interesting situation lately. So then, basically, what's left at this point is that the select board needs to choose between a single or a split tax rate. And on the split tax rate, we need to choose a factor as to what factor we're going to take and then vote on the other small commercial exemption, residential exemption, and open space discount.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair, but I also want to just remind the public that she doesn't work alone. She actually has a board of assessors, you know, that is also an elected body that help with this, that are comprised of residents, you know. So I just, I don't want anybody thinking just because she's sitting there that she doesn't have a team that helps her reach this decision to come forward with. Okay? I think the first thing I would like to do, Mr. Chair, is to make a motion that we use the split tax rate, okay? And I would make the motion that it be in the CIP factor, the 1.59, residential factor of .7549 as presented.
All in favor?
Yes. I. Mr. Chair, I'd also like to make a motion that the board, I want to word this, to not take up the small commercial exemption, the residential exemption, or the open space discount as presented.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that it?
You guys are all set. I am all set and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing for the tax classification for FY '25 be closed.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's closed. And now we move on to the common VIC because I'm not going to try to say that word because I get all messed up on it.
I think I've said it right once.
Yeah.
So yes, the application for common VIC license for Poki Aces and Tea, 25 Main Street, number one.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, there is an application for your consideration for the common VIC license for Pokanaces Tea at 25 Main Street, number one. And you have in the packet, the application, the type of businesses is going to be to go bubble tea and poke salad, I believe it's a Southeast Asian cuisine on both fronts. It has gone through the interdepartmental review. I think that the chief, the chief does have a point. He wants to make other departments, there were no issues.
Yeah, so it's pretty much the same thing. The use has changed from the coffee shop. So between fire prevention and the building inspector, they too, based on what they're going to have for a menu, they need to put in a type two hood system. So the same thing.
Type two hood?
Yeah, type two. So this is just for steam and smoke where the other one's for grease. This one's just for steam or smoke, so it would be a type two. So we're okay with it moving forward pending the permitting, installation, and testing of that type two system being put in. And they too have some dialogue already and they're working on getting that completed. So between the fire prevention officer and the building inspector, you know, it falls under one, either or, or both. So as long as that's included in getting that done, you know, then everything will be taken care of.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody hear from Sarah tonight? When are they hoping to open, you know? Do we know?
Soon. I thought one of them would be here. I mean, obviously, once the hood meets everything and this is the space where Union Coffee used to be.
I want to know the menu, so. All right, well, it's not necessary for the approval. It would just have been nice to know.
Yeah.
I have no questions.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that the board approve the common VIC license for the CHLLP doing businesses, who are they doing businesses? The Poki Aces and Tea at 25 Main Street, number one, providing the type two hood system has met Chief, Fire Chief's approval.
Good. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Moving on. Okay, next on the agenda, the Department of Public Works report. Dan?
Good evening. Yeah, I'm here with Kimberly as well.
Hello.
Yeah, so three items on the DPW memo tonight. The first is execution of the contract for cleaning and inspection of sewers and storm drains. So this contract we put together, it's basically like a general services contract, kind of like our road paving every year. We don't know exactly what we're going to pave like three years from now, but we're sort of plan ahead and then we, you know, we can say, all right, we want, we need to TV these sewers this year, these sewers in year two, these sewers year three, drains as well, as well as having an emergency on-call component to it. So if we were to have an issue out in the sewer system, say, we'd be able to call up our contractor and get them out there for a TV and clean if there was a blockage and we couldn't handle it. So it's a really good contract to have and to help us move forward with maintaining the systems, the collection systems. So we went out to bid on October 18th. We opened the bids and Truax Corporation is the low bidder, 102,470. So that number is based on some estimates of where we think we're going to do the sewer and drain work. And we'll kind of modify that as we go. But they have done work in town before and have done a good job and so we recommend approval of that contract for signature by the board.
Okay, questions?
No questions. I make a motion that the board vote to execute the contract for the cleaning and inspection of sewers and storm drains projects in the amount of $102,470 for signature by the board.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Kimberly will take over for the next couple items.
Yep, so first we wanted to update you all on the Clearwell project. It's moving along at a good pace, which we're happy about. We've just received the 100% design plans and so we're hoping that it'll be bid by early or mid, bids will be opened by mid-January. So things are moving along. We're hoping that at the current pace, things will be in place for the next summer. So that's good news barring any, any issues.
You never know with construction, but everything is moving right.
Supply chain issues or anything like that.
Don't jinx it. We've talked about this. So if all goes well, you would go to, you'd be able to start construction?
Start construction, yeah. Yeah, notice to proceed would be in March and substantial completion would be in June.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, that is the goal.
Okay, yep.
The other thing, I don't know if we've got the slide for, no, the slide for the drought? Nope, you don't have that? That's okay.
It's in the packet, yeah.
So in case you don't know, the, actually, as of today, the entire state minus the Cape and Islands is in grade or level three, critical drought. The good news is that our aquifers are not being affected by the drought, so we don't have to implement any restrictions at this time. So there's no action required by the board. We just wanted everyone to be aware of it and it's a good idea if people can, you know, conserve indoor water use where they can, just to be on the safe side. Yeah.
So just, has there ever been a point, and I know this is kind of an odd time of year, usually you deal with this in the summer when you have outdoor use, that you could foresee there actually being like, you know, water restrictions just on residential use or anything because the drought gets worse?
Well, so our Water Management Act dictates that we have to implement restrictions from that, that calendar trigger that may first through September 30th, which we do every year. Because of the PFAS issue, we've implemented stricter conservation measures. We do watch the level of the wells closely, so if we felt like, like they were being affected by the drought, the aquifer itself, then we would come and to you and ask for further restrictions.
Okay. I'm just wondering, like, what would those look like? You know, is it use per house or anything like, I mean?
The easiest thing to do is to limit outdoor, outdoor use. It's hard to restrict indoor use.
Right, that's, I guess that's what I'm getting, getting to.
There's really no enforcement of indoor use. If you can't enforce it, you can't really restrict it.
Exactly. I guess that was what my point being, because usually in the summer you can just say, you know, no outdoor use. You're saying that, you know, we're fine right now and things are okay, but it's like, if things get worse, is there any measures we could take? But no one's really using water outside, so it's kind of like, it would be more of a conserve, telling people to conserve.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, we're supposed to get a couple inches of rain this week or something, so hopefully.
It's like dry as a bone out there. If you try to dig any holes, it's all just dust. So the next item on the list is the MWRA. So I've got a presentation on that. So what this is, here's the agenda, introduction feasibility study, why become a member community, process of membership and questions. And really, this is just to introduce you to the idea of the potential for becoming a member of the MWRA. And I'll go a little bit into what the MWRA is and what membership means and so forth. So what we're talking about tonight is that Air applies to become a member of the MWRA community without a physical connection because at this time we don't have a physical connection to the MWRA. Next slide, what is the MWRA? It's the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. They are the ones that manage Quabin and Watu City and deliver water to other communities. They are a wholesale water supplier that operates independently of any community. They're their own, they're their own thing and they're a whole, like I said, they're a wholesale water supplier and they serve 61 communities in eastern and central Massachusetts. So over the last few years, the MWRA has conducted a feasibility study that Air joined under no obligation. So I started joining these meetings. So I started joining these meetings back in December of 22. And it was really under no obligation. You can see in the little picture that AIR is one of the communities that's highlighted as part of this Metro West expansion. And it, they, they did a lot of, it was CDM ran the feasibility study. There was a lot of evaluations and discussions, a lot of community input and information. And they really just wanted to see if the MWRA transmission capacity, had the capacity to serve the additional communities that they were looking to expand into. Okay, there's a multi-step process and each of these needs to be taken in order. But there's no obligation to take the next step. So the first step, the first step is participating in the feasibility study, which, which AIR did. The next step is to become a member of the MWRA. The third, which is what we're talking about tonight. The third step is to connect to the MWRA. If the MWRA were to make a pipeline to the town of AIR to actually make the connection. And the fourth step is to actually purchase water from MWRA. And I can't stress enough that taking each step is no obligation for the additional step. I will also note that the study determined that the MWRA has plentiful amounts of water and they are able to supply the town of AIR if, if the pipeline were to get that far. These are the Metro West communities that they studied. It's a long list. And I'll also note that AIR is having sidebar conversations with the communities around us, so Groton and Westford and Littleton. So we're at the end of the line and so we're kind of working together to see about becoming members together, if we can work together to become members. And potentially having water coming to our borders, but that's, that's in the future. The next slide shows the conceptual project overview. And I guess what I want to highlight is the, the communities in pink are the, are the communities to extend out to. The, the other communities in various shades of blue are already served by the MWRA. So that blue bubble there is the potential spot where they would connect a transmission line to send north. They call it Shaft L. And so they're not exactly sure where it is. Again, this is just a conceptual project. And the blue bubbles there are where they would have to, they determine that they would have to build two 9 million gallon storage tanks. So either in the town of Acton or Concord for 18 million gallons total. So that's, they're having their own sidebar discussions on where those, those would go. Like I said, Eric Groton, Littleton and also Westford, we're, we're kind of trying to work together because we're at the end of the line. So we're really looking at 20 years in the future. This is even after I retire, believe it or not.
We don't let people air retire easily.
It's my retirement project, so we can retire until it's done. But in the interest of transparency, if the MWRA were to bring water to the border of AIR, we would have to build a pump station in order to move the water. So it's not like they just bring it to our border and we're able to just open a valve and the water comes. We would have to actually build a pump station to make the water move. So just trying to be transparent. So why? Because the availability of water supply is paramount to a thriving economy. We can only continue to grow if we have the water to serve, the water service to support it. So we have master plans that indicate that we'll need to expand our capacity to meet 2035 demands. And since 1967, the 1967 master plan, we've been looking for new well sites to satisfy that expansion throughout the town. And the new well source that we're looking at, well three over by Spectacle Pond is the only viable option inside town at this point. But even with that, you know, if the, if the town wants to continue to grow and expand, you know, Nusoya wants to expand, there wants to be new subdivisions. The estimate right now, and again, it's just an estimate, that by 2035 will be kind of at our limit for our own supplies. So that's why we're looking at future supplies. Yeah. So the other question is why the MWRA and why now? So the reason why now is because of that feasibility study showed that it's possible, but most, but financially, why now? Is that they are waiving the entrance fees until the end of 2027. So AIR's demand is calculated at two point, a max date demand, it's calculated 2.3 million gallons. And so the cost of joining the MWRA outside of this waiver opportunity would be somewhere between six and a half and $10 million. So if we were to move forward and apply for membership now, we would be saving that right off the bat. So that's the reason why, you know, why now? There are, and it's not just open to anybody. You have to meet certain criteria for getting this waiver. So the first is that local sources are impacted by water quality issues like PFAS, but we don't qualify for that because our water quality is actually very good. And we're already treating per for PFAS, so that's not, we don't qualify under that bullet. The other one is local sources are located in stressed basins, similar to like the Ipswich River Basin. They're very stressed out, so that doesn't really apply to us. The third one may apply to us, which is local economic development is significantly constrained by their existing water supply. So again, when we're looking in the long view of how AIR is growing, we might reach a, a limit to how much we can expand based on the current water supply that we have. So if we can get that supporting material, it has to be documented. And we already have a lot of that documented with our master plans. We think that we qualify for that criteria. This slide shows the various benefits of being an MWRA member. So even if the pipeline never gets to us, there are so many benefits to be, being a member. They offer free trainings for our staff. They offer access to chemists, hydraulists, hydrologists, lab staff and professionals. So they help with, with complaints. They, they have experts that we can ask questions of. And so that's, they've, they've got a lot of people on their staff that we can ask, which is great. They offer technical and emergency assistance. I can tell you firsthand, so before I worked here, I worked in Somerville, which is an MWRA community, and I utilized their technical expertise, their emergency assistance often. And they also offer water conservation benefits. They offer materials and low-flow devices and things like that at no cost. But it's not, doesn't wanna, I don't want to overlook the fact that they do have abundant water supply and excellent water quality if we were to get to that step. The next slide shows the process to membership. We have to undertake a comprehensive water supply planning and adopt effective demand management measures. A lot of that we're already doing. So it's a matter of making sure that everything's are being documented in the appropriate way. We have to demonstrate the acceptance of admission by a more, a majority vote at town meeting. Obtain applicable regulatory approvals. This is the really hard part, the MEPA review and the Inter Basin Transfer Act. We would hire a consultant to help us with, with this aspect of it. It's a environmental impact report and an inter basin transfer, because you're moving water from one basin to another. You can't just do that without approvals. Obtain approval from the legislature and governor, which is really just, should not be very hard. Allegedly, so I'm told.
So many comments, I'm holding back.
I know. And then, and then that all kind of gets put together in a package and we apply to the advisory board and the MWRA Board of Directors. What I have here is a proposed timeline. So it's a capital item that we have this year to do a feasibility, hire a consultant to determine if we do qualify for the waiver. And if so, to take us over the, over the threshold of, over the finish line of, of, of applying for membership approval. So that would be, if it, if it gets through capital and if it gets through town meeting, then that money becomes available July 1st and we would start with that. Then I'm looking at April 2026 town meeting to vote on it, to see if, if it gets approved. And if that's the case, then we would finish the, the application and get it to the MWRA before December 31st, 2027. I think it's a reasonable timeline and achievable.
Mr. Chair? Quickly, Kimberly, what is the, the amount requested in the chapel? I know you're gonna be coming to chapel in December.
Um, I believe it's $150,000.
Okay.
And I will say that I've been in contact with Littleton and Westford. I still have to get in touch with Groton. They might be interested in some cost sharing on that. So that's what we're asking for, but it might cost less if the other communities get in. We do MO, MOUs with them and there would be some cost sharing on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. This slide, I'm not gonna read, but it's really just a really detailed list of everything that the advisory board needs in the application process. It real, the slide I had before was more of a summary, but this just lays it out exactly what is needed. And I don't know if you have any questions at this point.
Questions?
Pauline's hand is raised.
Thank you. Yes, Pauline.
Sorry about you again, but I'm interested if anyone has talked with the town of Shirley or looked at their private water district? Because it's interesting that the town we partner with most is not even included in this discussion. The other question I would have, and I'm not expecting answers tonight, believe me. The other question I have is, in all the years I've lived in Massachusetts, which is about 65, MWRA water rates are higher than any other community in the Commonwealth. And I'd like to see a graph showing what the MWRA water and sewer rates are compared to what AIR's are. I realize this is a supply issue, but there's not too much more build-out that can be done in AIR. I think most parcels are already spoken for. So all this talk about, well, in 20 years, I won't be here either, Kimberly, but in 20 years, people are gonna need water. Well, I'm not sure we're gonna have that many more residential units in AIR or commercial units in AIR. But, you know, I guess I don't have to worry about that. But I would really like, before we are asked to approve any of this, a comparison of the MWRA cost factor to that which we are currently paying. And I guess that's enough for the now.
I guess in response to that, I'd say that you're right, MWRA water comes at a price. And part of it is because of all of the benefits that come along with MWRA water, the, the excellent water quality, the technical assistance, the regulatory assistance, the emergency assistance. They offer a lot to their customers. And what I'm looking for at the, oh, and I'll also say that part of bringing on the consultant will be to analyze how much build-out there really is in the town of AIR. We're gonna work with them to see if, if this is even, if this even makes sense to do. But even if we don't get water, MWRA water physically to the town of AIR, I still think it's a good idea to take advantage of the membership opportunity. And that is at no cost at this time. Otherwise, again, it would be between six and $10 million just to be a member. We can become a member for free minus what we would be paying the consultants to help us figure all of this out.
And that's a fair enough response, Kimberly, thank you for that. But what you're saying is you're basically paying your former employer and all their colleagues out of business for any, any business with the town of AIR. And I get that. If we save that, the tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, we paid consultants for water and sewer. I'm good with that. I just really want to see the comparison of residents and users of water between MWRA and what we are currently paying with the town of AIR or even projected into the future.
Um, I'll also say that I know as a former MWRA, working for a former MWRA community, they don't have flat rates, like they don't have rates per gallon like we do. They charge communities based on the percentage of water that they use. It's a hard concept to kind of wrap your head around. So if.
But the community, they would have to charge the residents and the users.
The community would then have to charge the residents.
Right, so, you know, that's the analysis I'm looking for. How much more is it gonna cost me to buy water from MWRA rather than the town of AIR?
Sure, I mean, another option is, you know, utilizing our, our other interconnections by purchasing water from the town of Devens or purchasing water from Littleton. Those are our current interconnections right now. And either way, if we needed the money, if we needed the water, we would be purchasing the water and passing that along.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So though I understand what Pauline's saying as far as, you know, we're built out, by the time the 20 years has come up, okay? The decision on the jurisdiction of Devens will have been solved, okay? May come back, might not, don't know, okay? But on the chance that we get back our historical property, or at least some of it, because there could always be a hybrid option and everything, then that would be the build-out. The other thing is that we gotta remember is that just because we don't necessarily build tall now doesn't mean in 20 years, we won't build tall. And I just want to tell Pauline that people are living till over 100, very functional. So, you know, just saying.
Yes, question?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask, do we know why the MWRA is foregoing $6 to $8 million effective in 2027 and giving it away for free three years prior?
I can't, through the chair, I, I can't speak directly as to what their motivations are. I can only speculate. So, okay, so my speculation is that they spent a lot of money to do this study and they would love to be able to sell everybody in that study water for the foreseeable future. So it's worth it for them to see who's motivated enough to become a member and want to build that pipeline out to them for future water sales.
No, yeah, I understand, it just seems like.
But again, that's my speculation.
I understand, I, I'm just surprised that any entity would knowingly give up $6 to $8 million in potential for the revenue.
It's like the old.
Give it away for free two years earlier.
The old Kodak method, right? Give away their cameras and then you have to buy the film, you know? So that, that's, you know, I.
Wow, that's an old an- analogy.
It, it still works though. Any further questions on this? I do look.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a comment. So the DPC presentation mentioned somewhere along Route 2A in AIR and Groton. Over the next few months, I would love to know where it is.
The connection?
Proposed connection.
Uh, West, Westford Road?
Yeah.
That seems right.
It'd be through the four corners in Groton to Westford Road. That's the current concept.
It's a concept at this point.
Is that Route 2A?
119.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, by Shaw's, right?
Yeah, by Shaw's, yeah.
Easiest way to think of it. Okay.
Oh, Rachel had her hand up, but I guess she's taking her hand down. Okay. So.
Okay, well, seeing no further questions, thank you.
You're welcome.
Interesting to see how this will move along.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. So we're now up to the update on the senior center, site selection and building committee. All right, welcome. Welcome both.
Thank you. And we have several members of the committee.
Okay.
Welcome to the. Okay. Sure, sure. Thank you for having us back to give you an update. It's been about two months since we visited you last. Uh, before I started, I wanted to read a letter from Linda Marsh, the Shine counselor. That's serving the health insurance needs of everyone. She is our health insurance counselor. She couldn't be here tonight to read this during public input, so I just wanted to read it now. It says, "To the Air Select Board, I am the Shine counselor assigned to support beneficiaries in air with issues regarding Medicare and Mass Health. In that role, I visit many senior centers. I have visited the following: West Boylston, Sterling, Clinton, Gardner, Northborough, Westborough, Shrewsbury, Westford, Marlborough, Milford and Lemonster. Those senior centers all have a dedicated building. Some are old, some are new, however, they all have plenty of parking, ample space for activities and have rooms where I can conduct my sessions with privacy. Air is by far the worst facility I visit. The facility consists of a, half of a walkout basement. Parking is limited. There's no office space where I can conduct my counseling sessions. There are issues with the heating system and the phone system. I use the community room from the Housing Authority for my sessions. Since we discuss health issues, the sessions must be conducted privately. However, at times workmen come through the room as they perform their tasks. In fact, once a workman started working on some cabinets while I was conducting the counseling session. Other times seniors wander into the room. I understand the town is set to vote on a new senior center for the town. I urge you to support this effort. As our population ages, the senior centers play a vital role in supporting our seniors. Regards, Linda Marsh, Shine counselor with the Central Mass Shine Program." So as far as our update, I, in the past two months, we have been focused on further site investigation, refining the project cost and the timeline and beginning the public input process to educate residents about the need for a new senior center. We have completed the test pits at Bishop Road and those revealed quality soil for building. We are in the process of, of creating a three acre separate legal A and R parcel for, for the future senior center site. My understanding is that's staked out and nearing completion now. The phase one environmental study has come back with favorable results. The habitat assessment is, that's it, like a verbally done, right? But no formal report yet?
Uh, yeah, he's putting together the report now, but it, it's, you know, favorable for permitting, but I'll, I'll provide more for the committee later.
Sure. Uh, and then we're still in process with the electrical and water design and the deep borings were supposed to happen tomorrow, but I think they've been pushed back just a couple of days. So, um, in a nutshell, the, all of the due diligence necessary for Bishop Road is coming along and the results that we have thus far are all favorable for continuing on with the project. We have been refining the total, actually before I go on to that, if there's anything you wanted to add to the site.
I think it's good.
In terms of the refining the total project cost and the timeline, uh, we continue to work with Catlin Architecture to refine the total project cost and are feeling comfortable with the 16.6 million. That includes the cost of construction, site preparations, soft costs. Those are all of the engineering and architecture fees and permits and filing, all those other things, as well as contingency funds, the furnishings and the cost to bring utilities to Bishop Road. So everything all in, 16.6 million. And though there are a couple of different ways to bring this project to town meeting for, for a vote, um, and I outlined several of, well, three of them in, in the memo. The one that we are recommending is the one meeting approach on a special town meeting timeline. So going through the capital process currently to seek a special town meeting in February 2025, could be late February 2025, to seek final design funds and construction funding. So the full 16.6 million. We think that this is the best approach because waiting until spring town meeting or breaking it up into two pieces for final design funding and then construction funding will delay us another construction season, which the architect is suggesting will be anywhere between 700,000 and a million of extra contingency needed to be carried. So you would be, um, in essence negating the impact of, you could, you could fund it in two different steps. The 500 to 750,000 for final design dollars and then come back for the construction costs. But by doing that in two separate pieces, you're going to essentially spend that money you would have saved getting to the final design estimate by waiting the extra construction season. So the, the hope is that with a February special town meeting, we would be able to complete schematic design before the, before our special town meeting and then get design development and final design done in the spring with spring and into summer. And then, um, the bidding done in late summer and early fall so that the building has the opportunity to be erected and enclosed before the winter next year. And so then interior construction is able to continue on through the winter process. So that's the, the timeline that we are looking to target and looking for your support or your consideration for future support for a timeline, for that timeline. Any thoughts from the committee on, before I go into the, okay. And then the last of the, the third and last main initiative we've been working on since our last update is the public input process. And so in addition to the 20 plus public meetings that we've had where we have had public participation in person and via Zoom for each of those meetings, the CUA director, me, I keep the readership of our longevity ledger, which has a, a readership of about 500 paper copies go out and 330 to 350 email copies, as well as the folks that are in the senior center each week. I keep them updated with a column there, um, as well as making presentations or offering materials at the Newton Street Festival. We had a booth, uh, we had a booth at the Air Library's flu clinic, as well as handing out flyers, oop, that flyer are up there, um, at the fall town meeting. And we had our, a large public input session upstairs here on November 7th. Had about 40 people come. It was a great conversation, uh, great participation. And we did sort of a straw poll at the, at the end of it, based on everything they had heard, how many people would be comfortable voting yes at a, a future town meeting? And I would say about 80% of the people raised their hand. And in that 20%, I'm counting the two or three people who were not air residents who attended. So, um, you might doubt even say it was a high air percentage if I was looking just at the air residents. So, um.
Well, the air residents are the only ones we kind of care about.
That's true. That is. That is true. I was just giving the benefit of the doubt of the 80% of the hands went up. So, um, so we are, we have two additional public input sessions scheduled coming up. The first one is Saturday, December 7th. We're inviting people to have coffee and donuts at the senior center and hear the same public input presentation and do, um, break up into small groups and discuss a series of questions as well. So that's Saturday morning, December 7th. And then, um, an evening presentation at the library, uh, that's at 6 o'clock on December 11th. So we're hoping to get additional public input at the, at those two.
What time is the December 7th?
The December 7th is at 10 a.m.
Thank you.
Yes, go for it. Oh.
The budget for the, uh, the grant that we're working on, that we steer on the grant. So they know.
Oh, yes, yes. So the, um, so the, this committee has been working with about $375,000 between a little bit of leftover U-DAG money from the previous efforts to build a senior center, as well as the $60,000 in ARPA funds that the select board granted to the committee, as well as 300,000 in a state housing choice grant. So we have about $280,000. So we have spent, um, all of the ARPA funds and there's just a small amount, a couple thousand dollars left in, in U-DAG. Sorry, I don't have that number right in front of me. And then, um, we are still waiting for a lot of those bills to come in for the site work that we're working on and then anticipate spending the rest of that grant funding on the schematic design with the architect.
So just a couple of questions. Of the, you know, 75 to 80% that said yes, which is great. What was the rough demographic? Was that a pretty equal across ages, genders?
I think it was mostly seniors.
It was mostly seniors. There were, um, two or three, um, couples that were younger that were in attendance, but it was mostly seniors, I would say, yeah.
And of your literature that you've put out, um, you said about the cost of, um, you know, like a gym membership and said, you know, go to the senior center and use the gym. So is that open to the public? Like anyone at any age could go to the?
So I, I think that's an operational detail that would, that has yet to be decided. The charge from the select board was to build a standalone senior center. That would be a senior center during the day. And that there's a potential to use some of those spaces in the evening or non-senior center hours for boards or committee meetings or community organizations. Whether or not the gym would be included in that is, I think, something we'd have to work out. Certainly that's, um, a little bit different space than just an open room in terms of maintenance and potential for injury and stuff. But I think the short answer is I think that still is yet to be worked out. I was probably envisioning it mostly for seniors, but knowing that a lot of younger seniors have gym memberships. And so, um, you know, that is still an applicable statement for at least 25% of our, of our population.
I just caution going forward with that wording.
Right.
You know, because all I could think of is you're going to have, you know, all these 18 to. Going there, which if that's what you're looking for, then that's great. But you might want to, you know, put that in there, you know, if you are a senior.
That's great feedback. I will take a look at the language in there.
Is that the paragraph right there? The one you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where it says. I know, top left, I don't know. Yeah, okay, yeah. So in, yeah, so it's, you know, in practical terms, what that's equivalent to. You know, I could, it could be revised to say, you know, 50 plus can use the new senior center instead. Or, you know.
Well, that's the other thing you have to clarify. What's a senior? You know, because I mean, for, um, you know, some purposes, we've established that the age in this town is for seniors is 65.
Uh, actually 65 is only the age for Medicare. As far as the state and our state funding for formula grants, it's 60 plus.
Okay. Well, like I said, that's what we've established for some things in this town.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay. So I think that your, your paperwork would have to kind of clarify that this would be for, like the 60 plus crowd.
And that's a fair point. I, I can certainly clarify that. As we operate right now, I consider a senior someone who's 60 and older. But I always say, if you find yourself in the fortunate circumstances that you are retired in your 50s, then come on down and join us, you know? So, um, so I, I, I'm sure we could narrow that and make that more specific for the sake of the brochure though, for sure.
And, uh, this plan that you have going forward right now, i- is this what you're looking for? Kind of like, uh, um, trying to think a way to put it, like, like what you want to have pushed forward? Is there any wiggle room where you could say, you know, maybe we could change this or eliminate that, add this a little, you know, things like that? I- is this the plan that you're very comfortable moving forward with?
I'm very comfortable with this plan. We're certainly open to public input. That's part of what we're doing, um, right now. But I'm very comfortable with this size, this layout, this configuration as far as being able to meet the needs of the seniors, both now and into the, into the future. Somebody joined?
Oh, okay.
No, I'll let you know.
All the little tones and stuff, I don't know if someone had their hand raised.
Do you want to mention, um, sort of some other towns and their experience with their sort of newer senior, senior centers and what they kind of wished had?
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I did a comparables, um, survey of other towns that had built senior centers within the last five to 10 years. And I, um, asked them, you know, uh, their square footage and what it costs. And, and then at the end I got into, uh, so what went well? One of the things that they all mentioned was that they ended up with at a minimum two to three times as many seniors using the facility once they had a new facility. And one of the people even said that the week before they had had 300 people. And, and it wasn't a special event. That was just how many people were using the facility and they were flabbergasted. But when I said if you, there was one thing that you would change, knowing now, which you know, every single one of them said, we would have made it bigger. So I think some people look at this and say, gee, this is awfully big. And do you really need all of this? And what they found was there were so many people coming and they had so many different activities that they wanted to do. And they just didn't necessarily have the space. And they didn't have their, which one was it? Needham was, they found that their, um, gym, where they had all their equipment, what they had so many of the younger and 60-year-old trying to use the, the gym and it was too small. And they just didn't have any way of expanding that at the time. So I think when some people look at this and think, wow, that's so big. Do they really need all that space? I think it's important to remember this is looking 30, 40 years into the future. And the figure's saying that the senior population is just going to keep growing and growing and growing until 2060. So I think it's a wonderful design. It's very similar to two others. The architect who's considered the best architect for senior building in the state and kind of in the country, uh, designs every phase of it. What's the best thing for seniors in terms of sound, in terms of, um, walls that they can use to track stairwells, uh, lighting, everything. So I think it's a wonderful building and it's a residential warm and welcoming building, unlike some of the new modern ones that kind of look like a Walmart. So it is maybe a little fancier than some people might expect. But we wanted to do a residential welcoming, home-like environment.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, and then just so you'll know, Pauline has her hand up also. So first of all, I am totally for the project, okay? Mr. Chair, if I may ask Robert a question?
Please.
Robert, if we were to have a, a special town meeting in February, where would, when would we have to have the election? Because you have to have both. So we would have to declare a special election shortly after the town meeting. Then we would have annual town meeting and then town election, correct?
Correct. So, Mr. Chair, to select my Livingston's point, as the board knows, let's do the town meeting piece first. The board can call a special town meeting. The board can call a special town meeting, uh, with a minimum of fourteen-day notice. And you're absolutely correct. In addition, just for the public's benefit, the, the borough authorization would require two-thirds vote of a town meeting. And it has to pass a ballot by simple majority. That ballot election, um, would take place, um, after the special town meeting. And the statute says that the select board can call that special election. They have to give a thirty-five-day written notice to the town clerk. So in other words, um, the select board, in terms of scheduling, would have to find a date to call the special town meeting with at least fourteen days. And I think everybody agrees you want more than that. And would have to tee it up to call the election. Ideally, the election would happen, um, after the town meeting, within a week or two. If you think of the normal cycle, if we have a dead exclusion in April at the annual town meeting, then the voters vote on the dead exclusion at the annual election, which is a week or two later in May. So to selectman, uh, selectmember Livingston's point, um, we would, uh, have to pull out the schedule and tee that.
So on that, so those would be an additional cost that the town would have to pay. It's not big money, but when you add it all up, it needs to be considered, okay? Um, again, I'm for this project, but, you know, questions need to be asked, okay? I'm very concerned about this timeline. You've also, I, I think it's great that you've been doing the public outreach and I know you need to do more. But here is the problem. When you go to town meeting, a lot of seniors don't go to town meeting because they're not driving at night. So, you, you know, you wanna get a van and, and pick everybody up to get them a town meeting to vote. That's fine. I, I have no problem. I think that'd be great if, you know, everybody had some transportation. But that is a problem that needs to also be considered. So right now, yeah, you have the seniors that are all for it, the ones that are going to the senior center right now. But you need to reach those people that are way younger, that are gonna be paying for this also. So I'm very concerned about this timeline because I, when, when you first came to us and said, hey, we found Bishop Road, the price was about fourteen million. Then you had to add in the utilities, which increased another two million. A lot of people would say, well, why didn't you, like, cut two million so it still stayed at the fourteen million? This is a big ticket item. My other concern with this kind of, it feels like a rushed timeline. To, to you guys, it doesn't maybe because you've been working it. But to the people of the town, feels a little rushed. The other problem is we're going into the holiday season. We do not have the public's attention during the holiday season. They're out getting, buying their, uh, Christmas gifts, holiday gifts, planning their holiday events, getting, you know, whatever, you know, uh, however they celebrate, they're prepping for that. They're prepping for winter vacation when the kids are home. What are they gonna do with them? Then in January, the bills are all coming in, so they're not gonna focus on this. We literally do not have their attention. So now you're asking for a special town meeting in February. And we would have to, now here's the thing, what if, so we could go to special town meeting and then get a no? We can just cancel the election. We'd have to have everything timed. Otherwise, then we gotta have another election. Meanwhile, here's where it gets confusing for a lot of people. We're still doing the budget. So we've got, you've got all their public forums for the senior center, which is great. Continue doing it because, you know, that's the way to do it, okay? But you've also got all the public forums that are gonna be going on as we prepare for the budget. So meanwhile, we've got this one conversation about the senior center. Now we gotta have the conversation about just the normal budget. Then the school's gonna rear their head, okay? So we've got a lot of things going on. They're going to Capitol, I think, this week.
Yes.
Right? The finance committee, I don't know how, uh, you know, how much they've had a chance to really look into this. But they're also gonna be looking into the budget. So now you have a special town meeting in February. You got an election, we'll say, in March. Now you get your special, your annual town meeting in, in, uh, April, and then you got your town election in May. This ain't, I don't think the people are gonna buy it. There's a lot of voter, voter fatigue right now, okay? So I am very concerned about this timeline. I'm very concerned about the cost of this. Is it worth the, is it worth it to have a nice senior center? Of course it is. But I think you need to pull back a bit on some of these costs. If nothing else, you need to show the public that, you know, hey, we, we said we wanted a couch, but we're not gonna get the couch. We'll, we'll just get, you know, a nice futon or something, a little cheaper. You've got to show that you can cut back a little bit. You don't need James Bond's Aston Martin right now. Down the road, you can have it, but you can't have it right now. It just, you, then there's the problem in that area, you're gonna have to move that gate.
No, that's, we'll get that covered. All that stuff's covered.
What I'm saying is that there's a lot going on, okay? Then there are people that are concerned about trying to turn out on, from Bishop onto Park Street. There's a lot of stuff going on, but I'm very, very concerned about this timeline. And I feel like it's, it's coming on too rapidly. I get it, you know, you wanna, you wanna get into the building season and, and I agree with that. But I, I'm very concerned.
Can I offer two points of clarification? One, just as a, as a public service announcement, the COA does have a van that we run five days a week and it is always available for town meeting. All of the town meetings, be they fall, spring, or a special one, anytime anyone would like a ride to a town meeting, they can just call the senior center to, um, schedule a ride because it is always available for, um, town meeting. And then I just, I, I understand how it could seem like it's coming quickly. Um, but this is a project that's been going on, a, a priority of the town and of the seniors since 2018. This is now the third attempt. It's already, there was a first project that already went to town meeting. There was a second project that was proposed. This is now the third iteration of it. So, um, it isn't something that's kind of rushed on or come on. There's been dozens and dozens and dozens of public meetings. And it's something that if you are an older adult in town, you are aware of this. This has been in the newsletter, on the website. The public forum was advertised. I understand the need to, um, the need to reach younger families in town. Um, you know, the public forum we had was publicized. It was offered specifically in the evening at seven o'clock to try and get younger people to participate. It was, um, advertised on social media, which is obviously, um, more popular with some of the younger families in town. Um, my hope is that on a Saturday with donuts, maybe some, you know, people bring out their kids and get a donut and listen to the presentation, um, as well as offering another one at the, at the library. I can advertise it and I will continue to advertise and continue to offer them, but, you know, people have to wanna come too, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, it's not up to us, you know? It, it, and what, um, you know, selectman or selectperson Livingston's saying is, you know, it's, we don't wanna see it fail, you know? So, um, a- a- and if it was, okay, we're taking a vote right now and, and you go forward, you know? Uh, but it's not that. It's, it's, um, making sure that we do do everything, you know, a- at, so it has the best ability to succeed. And I think that's, you know, my personal opinion is, you know, I just, that's what I worry about. You know, the, the accelerated timeline. And again, it's not me, I don't, I, I don't, I have a vote as a town member, you know, when it goes to, uh, town meeting at whatever point, but, you know, I'm just a single vote and I just worry that. Um, you know, like, I, I see also in, in, in the brochure, it says, you know, you're looking at other funding to help. And that's great. I mean, that's, that's what we need to see, but, I mean, is there anything concrete in?
So it, with the funding, um, you have to have either shovel-ready plans or a, a positive vote at a town meeting. So no one's gonna give you a grant for a building that isn't definitely happening. So, um, though that is a little bit of a leap of faith, no matter what, um, we, we have to take to the town meeting the full cost with the understanding that, you know, there's a very high likelihood of getting CDG funds and getting, um, housing choice grants. There is a pretty good chance of getting, um, earmarks from, um, Representative Sina and Eldridge. Now, I have four or five other grants that I'd like to apply for. Those are, no grant is ever guaranteed, but those are the ones I think are pretty certain. Then the other ones are, can I, can I get another hundred thousand here? Can I get fifty thousand here?
But that is important to be, be presenting, even at town meetings, saying, hey, we've applied for this, this, and this, and that.
And that answer is great because, you know, I, I read it and I, and I'm thinking, you know, is it just kind of saying, yeah, we'll look into it? But if you have actual, like, look, here's a list of fifteen or ten, whatever, you know, that if, if we do approve as a town, you know, now we can go after all these and, you know, we stand a pretty good chance it's, it's something solid.
That, that's great feedback and I do have that slide for Capitol tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Pauline has a question.
We have established a friends group, the Friends of the Air Library, and I've got, I burned. Friends Senior Center, but I have been in contact with the head of the fundraising, uh, group for Wilbraham Senior Center. And they have raised to date nine hundred thousand dollars for that facility. And they hope by the end of the year to hit a hundred thousand. Going to businesses, some from individual donors. They sold sponsorship rights for various rooms, even for windows, where you get a little plaque sponsored by. They sold bricks out on the patio that said honored by, and he's willing to come and talk to us and give us all the marketing materials they used. However, he said, "Don't bother doing anything until you get town approval because nobody will give you anything until you have that." And I think one of the reasons we're pushing to go as fast as we can is if we can stay within this timeline and get the work started, we're not going out into another season where it might cost us an extra five hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, so.
And that is what the architect is recommending, is adding five to seven hundred thousand additional dollars in contingency funds to carry into, if you carry into the next construction season. So my concern is, for each season that we delay, every, each effort that we make to scale back the building, if, if that's, if that's what the public input is indicating, um, which I, I didn't really get that sense from the first public input session, but, you know, we have to have a lot of them.
But it's been said to me that really you're, the people that were already supporting you were at that meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we have to.
Right, so you, you need to get the people that are really questioning it and that really don't even know what this is. And you're gonna get that real information, absolutely.
How can we get them to a meeting? The people you're questioning, you're asking, I got a couple of comments later, but I would, since you just brought that up, how could you recommend that we get the people that are gonna go voting against it to a meeting?
That's kind of back on you.
I'm giving that thought, and if I come up with an answer, I'll be happy. I agree, but they, and they won't show up for town meeting either.
And then, and then you go put it on the ballot and they'll all be like, no way.
So we want to get those people to, I mean, no question about it. We wanna keep going. I did wanna comment on a couple of questions first of all.
Hold on, Pauline had a hand up for a while.
Yes, I do wanna recognize Pauline.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt your discussion because I'm very fascinated by it. And Janice, I just want you to know, you are saying everything in my head with two exceptions. First, and this goes way back to the beginning, AARP, I think, recognizes seniors at age fifty-five. At least they started listing me at age fifty, um, way past that. So I just wanna share that as far as a use option. And then I'm curious, Ellen, about the study you referenced. Is that on the senior center webpage somewhere that I can look at it?
Well, I'm not sure.
So, are you saying, when you were? You know, Pauline, I think it's, I'd have to look back, 'cause there's so many documents on there now. I think it's back, um, in September. I can look into that and see what, what the date is, um, because Ellen did write up her comments from when she interviewed all of those other centers, so I can look for that.
We were working on that. Because if there's a concern, no, I have personally, although it's mine as well, but that other residents have expressed to me, and I don't still know why they all come to me for these questions, but it's much what Janice said earlier. This is a pretty big building with two stories and a lot of rooms. But if you look at the neighboring communities, they don't have centers at this level or this expanse. And there's not a lot of expansion that can be done in air with respect to building to create more seniors. And I don't mean create, for seniors, but. We don't need to create any more of this, right? But you know what I'm getting at. And, well, this is an envision for, you know, the next thirty years. I don't know if Air will be here, not be here, but be that large.
Oh, I was gonna say, where are we going?
So, so the numbers, so the numbers I'm working off are from UMass Amherst Population Studies Department. So it's well-respected, um, data that shows a hundred and eighty-two percent growth in seniors from 2010 to 2035. And we know, um, based on national level data, that that growth in the senior population will continue on until 2060. It's just the projections are just going to 2035. So we know.
We will grow the senior population. But let me ask a question that I didn't intend, and you do not have to answer it tonight, Katie. How many people use the senior center now? And this is a question that has been asked by members of the senior center committee, because I've been there. How many do you envision in the future, if we build this two-story, uh, building that won't even house people? You mentioned the word residents earlier. And again, this is something I'd like to see presented on paper at a meeting, not necessarily tonight. And with that, I'll leave you all to finish what you're doing, but it's getting late.
I, I have the, the answer to that, or do you want me to address it later?
How many, how many use the center now?
So, so right now, it's about four hundred and fifteen seniors. Um, and so with projections, you know, doubling to tripling, it's gonna be a lot of older adults. Um, so, and the reason that the building is on a two-story plan is, um, based on the wisdom of the architect. Um, and he, like you said, is the, is the leading architect for senior-focused, um, buildings here in the state. And once you, uh, communities around us that have up to ten thousand square foot buildings that are saying that they're much too small. So once you go past about ten thousand square feet, the recommendation from the architect is to go to two stories. Because then you enter a building and it's like, um, sort of like a wheel, like with the hub and the spokes. So you walk into the building and imagine you're someone who's using a walker or someone who's recently had a knee surgery. You walk in the front door and there are, uh, these options within a twenty-foot radius of you to go into these activity rooms, the cafe, the reading room, the big multipurpose room for lunch or for fitness, or an activity room. Then you go either up the stairs or up the elevator and it's the same situation. Versus, once you go beyond ten thousand feet when you're staying on one level, you start having these long hallways. And the physical toll for some users, not all users, but for some users, is too large. It's, it's disincentivizing to go down a long hallway like a school building to get to the last one on the left where this class that you wanna do is. And so it is much more inclusive and much more encouraging to use the whole building when it is, um, packed in tighter on the two floors.
But there's also an economic, um, there's also an economic reason because of heating and, uh, cooling of the building. And, and he just, he, he emphasized that over ten thousand feet, it's much more economical to do a two-story building. So it may look like, oh, we've gone, you know, so much bigger, but in, in effect, it's cost-saving as well. And it's better for the seniors who have to, you know, make, get themselves around it.
The concrete costs and the roofing costs are more compact when you have it that way versus.
I wonder, if you have a minute, I'd like to go, I wanted to get back to the timeframe to the February town meeting and the cost. So all of us are concerned about the timeframe and what it would take. And I think we decided on February as being, you know, something that was possible. But of course, we're, nobody's saying we can't move it to March or something like that. Is there a better timeframe, the senior center and Chaney and the men to us that we could look forward to, a plan to, would be more acceptable? If February is too soon, what would make sense on the timeframe?
So, I don't know the answer to that specific question, but what I do think is that. But what I do think is that you copy what they, what the working group did with Stormwater. Okay, meet with the businesses, uh you know, have more public forums, and you know that, okay? And yeah, we gotta send out a flyer, you know, to everybody. And no one's the next tax biller, just send out a letter to everybody, to the whole population. With the, you know, and you know, maybe, maybe it's time we stop doing just this one little page flyer of, hey, this is what we want to do. And we're trying to cram everything in a page. Maybe it's time to do a couple of pages and mail it to the community. And let them get it in their homes where they can sit and read it. You know, maybe that's a good idea. Now, there's also an additional cost because of the mailing and everything, so you know, it's just, that's unfortunate. But maybe it is time we try to reach out a little bit differently. Because you're gonna need, because let's be honest, the other po, the other problem is voter fatigue. And, and we see it all the time and you know, trying to get people to show up at the ballot, even on this question, you know? We've got to somehow get everyone ownership of this, okay? I'm in your senior group, so you've got my ownership in it. Um but you need to get my niece's ownership in it, okay? You know, if not for herself or, you know, maybe her mother, her grandmother and everything like that. So we have to do things differently.
I would certainly welcome.
And I'm just, I'm just throwing out, I, I don't think the one-page flyers are doing it anymore. You know?
We don't have a one-page flyer, we have a four-page flyer.
That's great.
Um just a couple of points. Um first, um to Ellen's point, when we were doing um in terms of the uh, the size of the building. When going as far back as West Main Street and Peroni Park. I independently and separately from the work that Ellen has done since. Contacted a number of senior ser, senior center directors um that had recently built. And consistent with what Ellen found, it was unanimous that you should not build it too small.
Oh, I think we all agree with that, but we're talking about a sixteen and a half million dollar project.
So, so, but to that point. They were unanimous that there are significant risks in terms of the utility of the building by making it too small. That is, you outgrow it and now ten or fifteen years from now, in order to properly serve the community. You now have to ask for an extension or an addition to the building. Because the building was not built large enough to accommodate future growth. So that's, so, so that's an issue. As to the point of um people feeling that it's a rushed project or they haven't heard about. My experience in town has, and I've talked to a number of people about this over the last, going back to West Main Street. Hasn't been, why are you rushing or I don't understand this, or please don't make us vote on that.
No, the rushing comes from the announcement in August that Bishop Road has been selected to February. We're going to town meeting to spend sixty and a half million dollars.
So my experience in talking with people around town has been, when are you gonna build it? That is, we've been hearing about this since two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. When a large public forum was held up at the school and plans began to uh be uh, be created and West Main Street was brought up. So for six to seven years, a large segment of the air population have been wondering. Well, I've been hearing about this and they're talking about this and then they moved this, when are they gonna build it?
But you know what, you know what's the sad part? And you can look at town meeting attendance, they don't always show up for town meeting. You need to reach the people who will actually show up at town meeting.
I, I would absolutely agree with that. Any assistance that you could provide, if you wanna, um if you wanna let your niece know that we are available at the Senior Center. For her to come down and, and discuss this matter, I'd be happy to do it. Please fair, please feel free to share my email address with her.
Well, I use her as an example because of the age difference.
No, I understand, but with anybody you may be coming in contact with who is expressing these concerns. And I, I mean this sincerely, if you could share our contact, my contact information with them and ask them to reach out. I would be more than happy.
We will be happy to hand out that.
We're kind of going down this kind of funny little hypothetical, I mean, I get everyone's point here. So what I'm saying, and I, you know, again, for me, I'm playing devil's advocate. I'm not here to say this is a bad idea, I, you know, you need a new senior center. Um however, you know, I, I, I don't want to speak for Janice, but I feel like she's in the same boat. It's, you know, we want it to pass and we're just trying to come up with all the reasons why it won't. And have it out there so you can vet it and, and, and make sure it goes the right way. Because the worst thing that's gonna happen is it gets voted down. And now you're, you know, going through this whole delay again and it's this feeling of, no, we already voted it down. You know, like, it's gonna come up again. People don't like to revote on things again and again and again. So I might come off sounding negative and I don't want it to be that way. It's more just, and you know, we're throwing things out and then you're kind of coming back to us saying, well, what should we do? It, it, it's not, you know, we have the answers, do this, it's, you know, think of these things. I don't have all the answers, I wish I did, I'd have a lot of money right now. But it's more just, you know, tho, those, those are the things that we all, you know, have to consider. Uh you know, please take it as, you know, a, a help, not a, yeah, see, th, this is, you're, you're not doing the right things and you know, everything's bad.
Plus, this is the where to have this conversation too. And again, I'm for this project, I, I'm looking forward to seeing this, but I'm also very concerned.
So given, so given the current numerical value for the project. What, what would be, in your opinion, the benefit of going to Springtown Meeting? Because you know it's gonna add additional cost, right, the longer we wait. Um I mean, do you think it would just be m, more of a positive vote? With more people turning out?
I, I think that you, I think you have that possibility, okay? But I, I'm not saying that that's definitely the answer either. But I, I think that if that route was chosen, okay? That you also have the benefit of while we're talking about the budget and while the school comes up forward and while this. Everyone's getting the clear picture.
Of everything.
Of everything. Together. Which could also be a bad thing. Um but at the same time, having it as two town meetings could cause some confusion. Because people will, they'll be like, okay, this, this project was gonna cost me this much. And well, what do you mean this is gonna cost me an additional? Because now it becomes two pieces, you see what I'm saying? Um that sometimes you're, you're too busy to be able to say, oh my goodness, this is how much I spent.
Right, so, so in your opinion, just given sort of the historical significance of, you know. At every town meeting I've been at, most things get passed, right?
True.
Right?
Because everyone's done their due diligence.
Okay, so that's a good argument, right? So you're, so you're, so you're arguing that we need to do more due diligence and potentially wait for a Springtown Meeting?
I'm arguing that right now you're hitting a holiday season. And people are gonna be focused on that. And we've just had the tax classification, so they're all gonna be sitting there going, oh. You know, my house is assessed at this amount, this is how much it's gonna cost me, okay? So there's that, now we're going into a holiday season where we lose people's attention. So that is my concern, is that now all of a sudden we go to a February special town meeting. And people will be like, well, where the hell, pardon, uh did this come from? That's my concern.
What about the, what about the um, what about the argument about the increase in cost the longer we wait?
You've increased the cost already because we had to add in utilities.
No, well, the cost just didn't include it first and we were formulating.
Right, right, people heard fourteen million, few days later they heard sixteen million. That's how people think the cost increased.
But that's just a function of having transparency through the committee process.
That's right, and there's another potential six hundred thousand. But there were also people out there going, well, why couldn't you, you know, have maybe cut a little cost over here? So when you added in the utilities, it didn't raise as much.
Well, because there was no mandate to be at that, that dollar value. Uh, I'm sorry. There was no mandate to be at that dollar value. We were putting together a total cost. Yeah.
We're still working on the, the whole process as, as you mentioned.
Right, but right now it's sixteen and a half million dollars.
There'll never be a moment that stops in this process that we're not trying to get price down. You can be assured of that. There'll never be a ti, time in this process, we're not trying to get grants. In fact, I was on the phone yesterday myself with MRPC, talking to the grant writer over there. So we're working on the grants all the time. But I think it's a great concern, what you said about this, the town. If we believe, all of us, that the best bet for this project is to go to a Springtown Meeting, I'm in full agreement with that. I don't see any reason why that wouldn't work for us off of your input. The ti, the timing of the money, to be quite honest with you, is out of anyone else's control. We could get inflation in a miracle to go down and the price at six hundred thousand would vanish. The estimated escalation cost for twenty, for another year. So we don't have a control over that. But we do have a control over the timing of the work that we get done and that we do it the best way we can, which I believe we have been doing, actually. One of the problems with the process, we, because of a municipal project. We couldn't take the land that we needed two years ago over there and we had to go through a, a year's process of just finding the land. We lost a whole year in the process because of the requirement of a municipal system. They go through all these meetings and all this other stuff. And that's just the way it is in a municipal system, you have to vet every single thing out. So, and we're doing that, so you can feel confident that we're working the best we can to get all that done. Uh I, I, I mean, I don't know what anyone else, I, I'm okay with a Springtown Meeting, to be quite honest with you.
My thought, my, two answers um on, on the, you know, i, it's gonna cost six hundred thousand if we wait and, and all that. One is, so you are listening to an architect. They're in to make money, right? So it's a valid point. It's, it's a valid point, right?
But it's, it's construction costs, right, it's overall construction costs.
Okay, so you can take that and say it.
We're gonna build a total process that is gonna give us the best price.
The further out, the wider the cone is, as you get closer, your cone is narrower. How predictable the costs are, how far out you're projecting.
So you can take that and throw that away if, if you so choose. My other point is, what's the cost if this fails? Okay, so you have the six hundred thousand. And you say, all right, you know, we're, we're, we're going, we're going forward and the vote fails. Okay, so now, we're not talking about capital costs, we're talking about public thoughts. We're, we're the court of public opinion. So that would be my thought on that is, okay, so you wanna go forward at six hundred thousand. Okay, we gotta save that money. But if you fail, and this goes back and I, this is something that I do hear from a lot of different people. I don't want to vote on the second thing, it failed, why are we voting again? Why are we voting again?
They've voted on this.
I'm saying, what if it fails?
No, he means if it fails.
If it fails coming up. Because you're pushing forward to say, we gotta save that six hundred thousand, we gotta rush, we gotta rush, we gotta push. It's the only way to do it. In that rush, you're giving up, maybe that time you could do some outreach, okay, that's valid. If this then fails because of that, what does that do to the opinion of the townsfolk? That's what I'm throwing out there and again, I'm just being devil's advocate, I'm throwing that out there.
I think it's great what you're saying.
So, to the point about um, is Springtown Meeting, it, it seems to me that. The best, the, that the people will have the clearest idea, the clearest understanding of what we're doing. Will be able to focus on the importance of this project versus other things best. If there is one article at one town meeting saying, we would like to spend sixteen point six million dollars and this is why. As opposed to later in April perhaps, where you have a town meeting and a warrant that goes. I mean, how many articles are typically on the Springtown?
About thirty-two and we usually out of there in three hours.
Right, so we have a, a wa, people are given a warrant with thirty, let's say, articles on it. One of which is this one. And now they're asked to make an informed choice on thirty different articles, including this one. And their thinking gets muddled and how important is one as opposed to the other, et cetera. So I think.
I don't think so.
I think that people will be able to feel more empowered and more focused on the value of whether this is what they value or not. By having it on as a single article as is at, at a town meeting. And if they vote it down and I certainly hope they don't. Right, and.
We all agree.
You, so you hope they don't vote it down?
Of course.
Okay.
I'm for the project.
All right, so.
But we're just.
If they do, that is, if the people vote it down, that will inform us as to the people's view of the value of this service. It, I, right, I mean, it would.
But that's, but that's, and you know this, okay? Because you value a service in a different way than she values the service. We've established that over the years, okay? But sometimes people can say, I value this service, but I can't afford this service.
I understand.
Okay, but here's the other thing. So if we did it all in one town meeting, which has been done because a, a lot of, of those articles are even moved by consent. So there, boom, right there, okay? But everything is right there, boom, this is how much it's gonna cost. Everything is right there and, and no one has to have, you know, thinking over here, thinking over here. Because everything is boom, one lump sum, which is great. But the other thing is, if we did a second, if we did a separate town meeting, we could still do it closer to annual town meeting. Okay, and then still have it on the town election. And, and so, you know, having two nights, I'm not opposed to that because what he has said has merit, okay? Um but we could still put it closer, giving more and more time for this to be uh. One of the reasons why town meeting, annual town meeting goes as smoothly as it does is because of all the due diligence. That everyone, all the committees and boards end up doing, as to getting that information out, okay? You're working parallel with it too. And it could work now. You know, you get more, you know, more public forums and whatnot done and everything like that, who knows? You come back and we might be like, hey, everything looks like it's going well, let's go now.
We are trying to set up more meetings with Alliance Club and, and the Rotary and um church groups and all kinds of groups. Um in, some in December, mostly in January and then later.
One thing I would just caution, because it sounds like, you know, from all your stories out there, is be careful of confirmation bias. So, you know, I mean, you, you wanna hear that people are in favor of it, obviously. And, and a lot of your stories involve talking to seniors, talking to your peers. Um and again, I, I, I'm just throwing that out there, you know, um. Go to the high school basketball games, you know, things like that where you're gonna have the school kind of groups. You're gonna see different kind of people than just, you know, seniors. That, I'm gonna be using the Senior Center in ten years, so by the time it's built, if this goes through, you know, I'll be using it. Um but those are the kind of things to, to branch out and try to get to the, the younger people that, you know, are, are, might not be sold on this.
So, so I, I think what we're weighing here is whether it's more likely to pass at a special meeting, special town meeting, or as part of the Springtown Meeting. And, you know, I guess we all have our individual opinions about that. You know, mine happens to be, you know, similar to Dennis that um if we concentrate on just, just the one article. That will be able to um get more support and, you know, and, and actually pass it. Uh whereas this, it's in a conglomerate of others, there's so, there could be so much confusion that it, it would be more difficult. But, but that's an opinion, you know, and we all may have different opinions of that. I think that we're all on the same page and that we want it to be successful.
Yeah.
Correct.
I'm not here to see anything fail, you know, like I'm, whatever. I'm not here to see anything fail, you know, like I, whatever is.
You've got my vote.
Yeah.
You know, at town meeting and, and at the ballot. You, you've got my vote, okay? But we have to ask these questions and we have to have these conversations.
It's great.
Okay? Yeah.
No, it's, it's important because, I mean, air is, is very diverse. Demographics are very different. Um, you know, we vote, I mean, a lot of us, I don't, well, we don't have small children in the school system, but we vote for the school budget, right? Why would I not vote for the school budget?
Exactly.
Right? Um, and I would hope that that would be turned toward funding for a senior center. Because all of us, I mean, young people, we, we, we do age. We do need a place to go as we get older.
Oh, young people think they don't.
That's right, but they do.
We all thought that once. Then we woke up one morning, looked in the mirror and went, whoa, what happened? Um, yeah, I, I think that, I, I think that, I think we all are on the same page. We're just trying to figure out the best way to work it.
Right. We all have the same goal.
Um.
Yes.
Yeah, just briefly, just a, a, a couple of points and suggestions, so backing up. So if we went the special route, you know, the question came up about the cost of the town meeting and the special election, it's about five thousand dollars, just.
Right.
Yeah, that's not, that's not, not, um, an issue. Um, we've talked a lot about the, uh, discussion about the timing, you know? So there's still, um, the options, just to recap, is one, what I call the normal pathway, which would be the annual town meeting and the annual election. One of the, the risk factors to that is the potential cost escalation to the tune of six hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand, potential risk, if we go that route. The other route is to call, do a special, um, as mentioned. Uh, that would, um, if successful, would resolve the risk of the additional costs. Concerns have been brought up about, um, timing, outreach and, and so forth, you know, to get there. With Mr. Curran, Ms. McCurry had mentioned, and then Selectman Livingston mentioned, is, which is an interesting idea, is you could do, if you went the single approach, the single article project, you could schedule both of the town meetings closer together as Janice said in the spring, so you would have a dedicated, uh, meeting to this project, which, that the pluses would be, the focus is that, have all of the presentation, the discussion and so forth. Um, and then have the annual town meeting. I, I think one of the other things that, the other elephant in the room, so I think there's a lot of options that I think, that still think about. This is, this is the great one that if I had to answer to, is the issue of affordability. And it depends who you talk to. So the, a project has been designed on best practices.
Concept.
A, a concept is at six, sixteen point six million. And depending on who you talk to, and we all know this, um, is that too much? Is that, this is the great debate, is how, what is the, if there was a magic number or, or magic sweet spot, uh, we would maybe all be million is in the sense, and I hate to talk conceptual numbers, but they've been out there. I wanna stress, it's just conceptual, we still have a lot of work to do. If you accept the sixteen point six million and based on the preliminary analysis done by the finance manager, for the sake of discussion, the average residential tax bill, average, approximately, for the sake of discussion, would be two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Assuming a thirty-year borrow, it'd go two hundred and fifty and it begins a declining, you know, um, declining payment as we come along with that. That's not the definitive, um, number. What I, what I'm getting at is, I've heard some, not a lot, you know, people say, well, the project is either too big. And I ask clarification, do they mean too big physically? Or do they mean too big price-wise? Um, what, this is a rhetorical question, I don't have the specific answers. What do we do about the issue of the price? Um, 'cause it all comes down to, in the end, the issue of affordability. And it comes down to, and we all know this, everybody here knows this, it also comes down to who shows up at town meeting. The average turnout at a town meeting, being generous, average, is a hundred and fifty people. Will determine, but in the other catch though, is the ballot piece, and this is by design on the statute, because people, it's very easy to pass it at town meeting, as everybody sees, everybody, neighbors and friends. I could be for it, but when I come to town hall to vote, I could vote against it and nobody, no. So we have by design on all debt exclusion projects of this magnitude, this, this double hurdle. In the end, it sounds so simple, doesn't it? But it's, it's all about who turns out. So I guess, I know it's getting late, I appreciate just the, the time. I think we have some thoughts on the schedule. Um, the issue becomes the issue of affordability and the price. And I'm not making a judgment, you know, either way, because it depends, who, some people say it's two hundred and fifty dollars a year, order it up, and if you break it down, others may, that's too much, what have you. How do you, how do you get to that point without the worst thing is having it shot down because of the price and then going back? The last point, and I know that this group is working on this, and Mr. Chair, you made a key, you, key word you used about definitive of concrete. Every single project of this magnitude, I feel, if you can go into town meeting with some definitive financial sources, whether it's a grant, whether it's, it's a chicken and the egg thing, but, um, uh, donation, I'm over, you have a financial plan, it shows community ownership and community effort. It generates more support. So if you go to town meeting with a sixteen point six million dollar project, face value, looking for a vote, is different than if you go in with sixteen point six million is what we need. We have five hundred thousand from CDBG into the chair's point, definitive, not that we're looking at it. We have five hundred thousand here, we have this piece, this piece. No matter how small, it shows that ownership and the effort. I know Selectman Livingston often talks about, I think Ellen you stole the thunder tonight, about brick projects. And I know what you're saying, like, it's hard, it's that chicken and the egg. But my takeaway is, I think the scheduling piece can be worked out. The funding piece, the, the great challenge, and I don't think any of us has the answer, is, is this sixteen point six million affordable to the majority that are, you need two-thirds of the people in that town meeting to say yes, and then a week later you need a simple majority on the ballot to say yes. And then the third piece, which I know we're working on, is being worked on, is coming in with as much financial streams to it. So.
I think this has been a great discussion, and I know there's no anticipation tonight of any definitive vote on anything. And it's not the end of the conversation, but, um, and the last point is, we all agree, we do need the senior center. There's no question. And my final point, I promise, is, you know, nineteen ninety-six, we did the brand-new police station, this before my time. Two thousand and six, we did the fire station. Two thousand to two thousand and one, we did the town hall upgrades and renovations. Two thousand and eighteen, we did the DPW admin building. Two thousand and nineteen, we did the parks, uh, building. And I have said this before, it's long overdue, the seniors' need. Um, and I know there's a million other needs, I'm just saying, but I just bring that up. And all of those efforts had to go through, uh, this debt exclusion process, so. Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right. Um, I would like to close this, um, as it is kind of late and there's, you know, there's no vote. We're, we're, you know, um, we're, we're just all discussing. I will see all or most of you tomorrow at Capital Planning, which is an open meeting, so people wanna sit in on that, um, or, or go to the Zoom and, and hear more and ask more questions. Um, I, I, I think we all agree that's beneficial. The more that you just keep on kinda asking and talking this stuff through, the better. Um, just one final thought?
Yeah, I, I, I was just gonna say, we are so, um, restricted for space and, and the ability to do programs. I mean, Katie has been a really wonderful director and has just, just done amazing things with what she has.
She's been a mover and a shaker since your arrival.
So, so, you know, when you hear that other, uh, places have doubled or tripled their size, the number of participants, I think that we're gonna, we're gonna see a five-fold increase because we are so constrained right now that, um, you know, a, a new building will just make this town blossom.
Quick thing, we do have a, um, um, a committee meeting after the planning committee, and I think it'll be a good opportunity to consider all the things that you all have said. And I think, I find it very helpful and in, in the very best spirit of helping us to make this thing pass and become a reality. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for all your work and your time. Really appreciate it.
Good discussion.
Yeah.
I think we got a lot out there.
Certainly did. Time well spent. Okay, well, we're a little bit behind on the six fifty agenda, but, uh, the town manager report?
Mr. Chair, uh, Selectman Livingston, in the interest of time, you have my report with the warrants. Um, in this particular report, I took the liberty to spell out all things budget that we've been working on. Unless there are any pressing, pressing administrative questions from the board, I don't have any action items for tonight. Uh, you have in my memo where we're at on the budget process. And unless there's any questions, um, in the interest of time, I'll be back on December third, so.
I will be there.
Is that our next meeting, December third? Okay.
Um. No.
Okay.
All right. Uh, new business or select board member questions?
No.
I've asked a lot of questions.
I think I've asked all my questions.
Uh, moving on, then the approval of, uh, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, meeting minutes?
I didn't have any concerns, I didn't see anything, so.
That was a very quick meeting compared to this.
Um, so I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes from November fourth, twenty twenty-four be approved as submitted.
Uh, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.